Please take a silent roll call. And we have one councilman on the phone.
Mike Johnson is on the phone. I'm just looking for Mr. Atcher.
Okay, when he comes, we'll let him in. Okay, Pledge of Allegiance. John Nimskey, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to your republic for its citizens, one nation under God, equal rights, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Let me just remind everyone on council and anyone who comes up to speak to speak loudly so folks at home and who tune in later on can hear you. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed here under are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be discussed separately. Number one, approval of the July 2nd, 2024 Town Council Regular Minutes as amended. Number two, approval of the August 13th, 2024 Town Council Special Meeting Minutes. Number three, acceptance into the public record of the August 2024 paid bills. And item number four, approval of the cash receipts and disbursements from June 2024. Are there any of these items that the council would like to pull off the consent agenda for discussion? So hearing none, I entertain a motion for the approval of items one, two, three, and four.
Motion to approve items one, two, three, and four on the consent agenda.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, passage unanimously, thank you. Item number five, current events. So we have our next Carefree Conversations is September 13th, Friday, in the Visitor Center, so I will be there. Councilwoman Sheila Amorosa will be there and Councilman Michael Johnson. So that's from nine o'clock until 11:00. And so I encourage you to come. It's a chance to speak to us in a relaxed atmosphere and talk about whatever is on your mind. And if you have anything else, any other time you'd like us to get together, get together with your HOA or have a meeting elsewhere, just please let us know. And then before we talk about the 40th anniversary, are there any other current events from the council? All right, so 40th anniversary. So we had our first big event about three weeks ago, more or less, and we have a great lineup of things coming up from now until December 7th. So we have a committee headed up by Joe Gimmo from the English Rose Tea Room, and she's here tonight to fill us in on some of the details. So please come on up.
I'll come again if I'm going to get a round of applause every time I stand up. This is great. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council, and thanks to everybody for showing up this evening for the council meeting. My job is just to tell you what's been happening, and it's always good news when we talk about events. And I know that many of you did come to the event that we had at Spirit in the Desert for the historical happy hour. Preston Westmoreland had said we should call it the hysterical happy hour, and actually he was quite right because it was hilarious in parts. And I think everybody that came really enjoyed it. And certainly, thank you to Vince for videoing and to Herb Hitchen for also videoing. And those that didn't make it, you can see the link to that on the town website. I think through Carefree Connections, it's actually been posted there, too. But it was an excellent event. And for me especially, I really think that having a group of neighbors together who've been in the town a long time, who can really share stories that many of us have no idea about, was really invaluable because the next time that we make any sort of celebratory event, probably some of these people aren't going to be there and those stories will be lost. So it was really wonderful to actually capture that. So again, thank you to everybody that took part, and thank you to Images AZ Magazine and everybody else that helped to promote that event. Especially, I'd like to shout out to Madison Garrett, who, without her help and assistance, there would be no 40th anniversary. I stand up here and take all the credit, but it's got nothing to do with me. It's all to do with the town staff, the mayor, who's been so supportive, and the committee. So tomorrow is the beginning of the next event, which is a afternoon of well-being at Savannah. And we've included Savannah because, as you will know, it is one of the historical buildings in town. The Carefree Inn has been established, probably one of the longest buildings that's been built in town, and has a very checkered colorful history, so we wanted to include that. And they are actually offering two classes to get a taste of what they offer to their guests that come. And it's called an afternoon of well-being because there will be a yoga class and a sound meditation class, as well as a tour of the property, and they're offering some light bites in their wonderful café that they have there. I was really surprised to see there's already been 50 or 60 people that have signed up. And so that's really encouraging that people do want to take part. And of course, some of our residents may not be as able to take part, but they're certainly welcome to come to either go on the tour or just to actually visit the resort itself because it is spectacular. It is a world-class resort right in our backyard. Friday, the 27th of September, is the beginning of our Retro Wheels, and that's the Indiana-Jones and Temple of Doom movie. And actually, this evening, I understand there's a dress rehearsal of sorts to make sure that everything works. So if you're still around in town after the meeting, you might want to stop by and see how that comes together. I'm not going to read through the entire list of events because they refer to different months, but really for this month of September, it's Savannah, we have the movie. And then also, at the end of the month, we have our Carefree Restaurant Week, where we're all promoting a special menu for $40 in celebration of the 40th anniversary. And just taking us into the first week in October is our Dark Skies Event, where we are recognizing the beauty of the landscape that the town is situated in, appreciating the need for darker skies so we can take advantage of the starry nights. And there'll be an event at Our Lady of Joy Church. All of this information is available on the town website and on the Carefree Connections newsletter that goes out. And one last thing I would just like to point out, I heard today from the Sonoran Arts League, who are going to be donating a seven-to-eight-foot totem pole, and each part of it is going to be made by a different artist to represent the 40th anniversary, and it's going to be located somewhere near the children's play area in the middle of town. But that's going to be a fantastic installation that will be there for many years to come for people to enjoy. So that's all very exciting. I only come here to tell you good things. And with that, I shall ask you to please just sign up for Carefree Connections if you haven't already so you stay informed, and we look forward to seeing you at our future events. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. You do a great job, and Madison as well. And there is a half a dozen to 10 other folks on the committee who participate regularly and make it happen. So thanks to all of you. Okay, that concludes current events. Item number six, review discussion and possible action to authorize a five-year contract with Granicus SmartGov and a one-year contract with TopCon Solutions Store Blue Beam Subscription to provide electronic permitting software tailored to support Carefree's development, business, and code enforcement process. Stacy?
Thank you, Mayor, members of Town Council. Yes, this is an exciting evening. We're finally looking forward to enacting something that we've had on the budget for a while now, and it will be for our online permitting opportunity.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking to me. I think what's most important about online permitting is it seems like it would make our jobs easier. It does help, it does support the staff to help, but what's most important is all about customer service. And what we've been learning, and you know, we are probably one of the last communities to go from paper to electronic permitting opportunities, is that we have found that what does make it difficult for staff is the constant calls of people asking about the status of their permit, how much longer is the review going to take, what has been submitted, what is holding things up. We also get a lot of calls about just what's happening with code enforcement and complaints and being able to keep track of those things, and so, as well as business licenses. And so it seems like it should be something easy, but when we have to manage all those calls, it really takes away from the other things that are important to provide to the town, the town customers. So why SmartGov? It did mention in your report that we did talk to other software agencies or other companies that represented permitting software, but what we learned with SmartGov was that it eliminated the hassle of collecting data from multiple systems, manually transferring data between departments, and routing customer communications by hand. So what that really means is that basically we're going all electronic. And so it also allows for a broad range in all the types of permitting processes that we cover, whether it be a planning permit, a building permit, a business license, a short-term rental. We are able to accommodate all those types of permitting processes. And in doing so, it becomes completely transparent to anybody that wants to find out about this information and the status of it. It also makes government services easy to find and complete digitally for residents for 24/7, requiring no printing, mailing, faxing, calling, or going to a government office in person. And I cannot tell you, as I said, I kind of prefaced this presentation, that's probably one of the biggest number of calls that the front counter gets. And so you can imagine, even if you had a permit there yourself, the ease of checking up on what's going on without having to actually come into town hall or making a phone call. It does provide a platform solution capable of digitizing any service, optimizing the workflows required to fulfill that service, and integrating easily with other government databases and systems. And so what this means is that it allows for a large variety of permit types, as well as it integrates with a lot of the other databases that we use on a regular basis in the town. For example, with building permits or zoning permits, we do coordinate with Maricopa County Assessor's webpage with their GIS parcel map. So all of this will be integrated together through this permitting system. So lastly, it empowers government employees to manage, integrate, and expand services independently of third-party vendors and consultants. And really what's important about this is that if we have to make any changes to the system, any kind of adjustment, things that come in that are new, it's pretty easy and quick to make those modifications. But what I think is important is why this for Carefree and why this particular software. What we've learned about it through the interview process is that it's one of the most user-friendly permitting processes, not only for town staff, but for those that will be actually applying for permits. It's cost-effective. Based on the number of modules that we can add, it's one price, and it fits within the budget that has been allotted for this fiscal year. They provide very good support to the system, the Granicus Company themselves, SmartGov. And we've also learned that Cave Creek has just implemented the same software. And why I think that's important is because I know that we believe that we're similar communities, and they had an online permitting system before which wasn't working for them. So we're kind of piggybacking, kind of, you know, learning from sort of what they've had to go through. Just quickly, just looking at some of the things that it can do for us, it prepares graphs, data information that, for example, if you look at the graph on the left, it talks about the number of permits per month, and then you can compare it to the number of years. That's something that we talk about when we get to the budgeting season very often. If you do, I thought this code enforcement graphic was interesting because it can look at the different kinds of code complaints that we get per month, and you can see how it might change from one month to the next. So I believe there's maybe 150 or so capable data formats that we can utilize to determine different kinds of needs or to study different kind of aspects of our permitting processes. So what does SmartGov offer for us? They call a business process analysis, and it's configured workflows to match the town's processes. So what's nice about this is that we're not changing exactly the way that we might do something, but it's just going into an electronic format. There's the automatic parcel updates. And what's important about this is every time that there's a permit that's been submitted and gone through the review process and approved, it's archived. So that parcel kind of creates its own history, as well as at some point, I hope that we will take some of the archived information that we have and add it to this database as well. There is a mobile app with offline capabilities. You can upload photos eventually when you're out in the field. This is a very common practice now for many municipalities to be doing these things online. So once again, you have data in real time, and the applicants or those that are looking for information on those results can find them almost immediately. Again, it integrates with county parcel databases, also merchant vendors, Blue Beam, which is the software that we will use when we look at plans on our screens. And so it allows us to interact and make the review comments that we need to do, as well as Laserfish and GIS. And why these are all important is because people will be able to apply for their permits, and we'll have our merchant vendors, and we'll have our credit card companies being able to be connected to this and receive payment. Business licenses related to merchant vendors would be available, as well as Laserfish is kind of our archival system, so all of that will be something that will be utilized as part of our archival requirements. There is unlimited data storage at the property level for transparent search and historical capabilities, as well as it's backed by the Amazon Web Services reliability and security. There's no extra cost for any upgrades related to that. We are working with a group that are very skilled. They've done a lot of government work. They understand sort of what our expectation is and what our needs are and what we anticipate our customers' needs will be to put together a really strong system. As I mentioned, it's been market-tested, so it's very easy to use for both staff and the public, and I think that's really important. As I mentioned, there's over 150 reports and types of information that we can put together as we see necessary. And last but most important is you really need that helpline at times, because sometimes things need a little additional input, so they make that available to us. With that said, it is going to take us some time to implement. It takes about five months total. To set it up, it will take about six weeks, and that'll be interviewing with staff and understanding our processes, looking at what we have in place, and then understanding how to create the system, which then will take about 10 weeks. This kind of goes back to the SmartGov people, where they're going to create our online processes for us. And then lastly, we will be trained on it. It'll take about four weeks for all of us to be trained. I'm not going to go through the actual training agenda, but you can see it's going to cover all aspects of the permitting process. With that said, we're not the first, and I'm sure we won't be the last. As I mentioned, Cave Creek is a part of that, but it's also interesting to see that larger communities like Glendale are utilizing this software as well. So we think it's been well-used and well-tested, and we're very excited to implement that. So with that said, I will be happy to answer any questions. I also have Taylor Brodersen on the line, who is with Granicus, representing SmartGov. So if you have anything really detailed, it might be better to ask her than to ask me, but I'd be happy to give it a shot.
Thank you. What this brings is overdue for us. So it brings efficiency to our staff, efficiency to our customers, to those who are coming in to get permits. And even maybe more importantly, it helps us with enforcement and managing business licenses, fire inspection issues.
Short-term rentals.
Short-term rentals also, thank you very much. So things which I think we can do a better job of today. And having the right tools allows us to do a better job. So I think this is just really a good thing.
So any comments or questions from council?
I entirely agree. As a user and an architect, this really simplifies my job, and it saves paper. I mean, when you think about, when we submit plans, well, first of all, our plans are created digitally, so it's all files that you read in this software. So when you redline it, you're doing it digitally, and then you're able to send it back. Whereas what we're doing today, we send in two sets of plans, you redline it, then we make those corrections, and then we print two more sets of plans and submit that. Hopefully, we don't get another set of redline corrections, otherwise we're killing a tree to do that. So the paper savings is amazing, the time savings is amazing. Also, I have my staff just go online, like Paradise Valley, and check the status, you know, like, has the civil engineering been reviewed, is the structural engineering reviewed, architecture's approved, and so on. So, you know, we don't have to burden you about, come on, pull it up, put it in the next box, you know? So I'm thrilled.
Stacy, what's the time savings on this software that you've seen? There's obviously testimonial studies been done by other municipalities that have implemented this software.
I may not be the best person to answer, but I do know that our front-counter staff, it takes quite a lot of their time just to take a phone call to find out when somebody asks a question on the status of their permit. They have to get up, they got to go find the file, they don't know if the file is being reviewed at that moment, you know, looking at and then going around to several of us and asking, you know, the customers on the line, do you know how much longer you're going to be? So going to that person. And you can imagine why, it doesn't seem like it takes a lot of time. Let's say it might be, it takes five minutes, but that interruption takes time to then go back and for that person to, again, kind of get back into the mindset of what they were doing. The rest of us are also somewhat interrupted, you know? So it's, I don't have a number or a quantity for you, but I would say then on the flip side of, you know, we do deal with a lot of people that also have, they feel like coming up here is a hike, and you know, if they forget something, they're frustrated. But I also think then just also knowing, just as I think as Councilmember Miller just mentioned, being able to just look and see who's done something, who hasn't done something. So I think the mayor used a much better word than I did. It's the efficiency of us. I mean, it's not that we're going to necessarily be doing anything differently, but the fact that the ease of information coming in and going out is just so much easier to allow for people to get from their fingertips. They can get it from their phones even, so. I do know that the staff in general, you know, when they have to stop and find a permit and figure everything out, it's time-consuming.
So this will definitely directly benefit the user, the client?
Yeah, I would say more so than us, yes.
I do think that this does free up town staff to focus on their core competencies instead of doing administrative work, and that, I think, adds a lot of value to our town, as well as allowing people to see the status of whatever contract they're working on.
So for a while, it'll be a hybrid. It'll be digital as well as paper, but in the end of the day, it'll be virtually all digital.
Yes, correct. Yeah, it'll be an interesting adjustment. We're not going to just do it cold turkey. I mean, we're going to have a transition of even once we enter, you know, once we have the software online, we still are probably going to have permits that had started before we were able to implement the process. And, you know, we're going to work with the community to understand. I think it is a big change for those that have worked in Carefree for a long time and have gotten used to a certain process. But I think you'll find there's very few, if any. I mean, I don't have the actual statistic of a municipality that isn't doing this today.
Well, if any of those builders work in any of the nearby communities, I mean, Cave Creek, Phoenix, Scottsdale, they're all doing it. Even if they work in the county, Maricopa County probably does the same thing.
They do.
Okay. And it prevents, you know, you work in paper, paper can always be misplaced.
Right, or it can accidentally get destroyed. And, you know, that's the problem sometimes on the flip side. Now we'll have this electronic archival opportunity.
Yeah, savings of storage space, which is pretty big. Going back pre-COVID, City of Phoenix accepted hard copy and digital submittals. When COVID happened, everything went digital. They didn't want anybody coming into the building.
Right.
And to get an appointment, to get into that building was a difficult task.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions from the council? So hearing none, we have one public comment. It's Jan Neal. So please limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Good evening, Jan Neal, Carefree resident. I have a 40-year career in IT, so I'm just full of questions. So my first question is, what problems are being solved by this software? Have we documented business requirements, and what are they? How much does the software cost? What are the categories and volumes of activity that this software will address? Stacy, you mentioned permits, code enforcement. So that is a question that if you are able to answer, I would be interested in that one in particular, is what's the volume, for example, of permits per month? And then what is the duration of a permit typically? Is it one month, two months, three months, six months, et cetera?
Okay, well, I'll try to work backwards maybe from that question first. So what types of permitting processes it will cover, at least initially, are planning and zoning, cases and permits. Typically, I would say we probably get, well, what's interesting about planning and zoning cases that we get is that I might get about three to five pre-application requests a month, but then we wait until that actually becomes a case. So there might be one or two, two to three cases per month that we'll be looking at. Building permits, I don't know, Gary, maybe you can help me with that one, but I would say we must get about 25 to 30 building permits a month. They vary.
New homes, it varies per month.
Yeah.
Excuse me, per year. But what we see today is a lot more sophisticated remodels with our aging housing stock. So when a community matures, the development doesn't stop. People keep on reinvesting in their homes, and that reinvestment requires permits. And if you recall the budget workshop where John Gunn, our building official, went through his workload, the inspections were in the thousands. The plan reviews were in the hundreds. This is where the body of the work rests when we talk about the permitting process. That permitting process touches several departments, including planning and zoning, including engineering, including the building department. So when we interface all that, and it's at different stages within a process, this helps to tie it all together so the customer can see where it's in the process. And then when they go through the construction process, it allows them, if they're out of state, on vacation, or this is their second home, to keep tabs of their contractor. So it really, really provides the efficiency to the customer, to the resident, to tap into where they are within the inspection process, where they are within the plan review process. And that's where there's a lot of work associated with the front counter on a daily basis, answering those questions.
And so we have business licenses. That happens on a yearly basis. We also have our short-term rental licenses and complaints. And so I think, you know, I'm putting numbers out there. I would be happy to go back and get more concrete numbers, but I think that it's important to remember is that that's not the only thing that we do at the town. And so a lot of these permit processes are sort of one-man covers. And so, you know, to have then something where it's easier for that person who is processing a permit to find it, to see it, to review it, to get their comments out, is a big difference for us. So there's that efficiency of not having to scramble through the office and try to find certain things, coordinate with certain people and other things. And so permitting is a large part of what we do, but there are other things that we do, so that being one aspect to make it more easier for us to review and easier for the customer to understand where their reviews are is what's really important.
Has the vendor reviewed the business requirements? Are there documented business requirements? And have they looked at workflow, like how you're doing things now and what suggestions they would have?
They will be, yes. I mean, we've had some preliminary conversations about that, but we are, the first step into this will be to give them all of our permitting processes, all the different types of permits that we have, and how we would go through and kind of our processes, and making sure that we create forms that cover all the information that needs to be addressed. So they will be doing that, that's sort of in that first six weeks.
Okay. And then what is the cost for the software? And then what is the cost for them working with the town to make sure that there's a successful implementation?
Well, it's all one cost. The cost to initiate, to first initiate with the software is $25,615. Those are all, that's a one-time fee that is for the software and getting it established. getting it established, the yearly fee with this first year will be $13,257, this is all in the report too, or it's online, and because we've entered into a five-year contract with them, our yearly increase is minimal, it's three, I think it's approximately 3%, but at some point I'll let Taylor Broderson maybe correct me or answer that, and then we will have the associated software costs, what we call that blue beam, which allows us to integrate with the software and do our reviews, so this first year is the most that we will be spending at $41,770, we do have budgeted $50,000 because there are going to be some hardware requirements that we're going to have to implement as well, because we will be doing reviews online, looking at plans, for those of us in the planning department and building department, we will need some larger screens, things to that effect, so, so as I mentioned, we budgeted $50,000, and it looks like that's gonna be what's gonna cover for us to implement this.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, the ongoing operating costs will be $13,000, and it may be increasing per year?
Yes.
And so, has there been a cost-benefit analysis done regarding the outlay of cost, capital and operating costs versus the benefit gained? Gary?
Mayor, members of the council, there has not been a direct cost-benefit analysis, this is something that the council has discussed in their strategic plan to digitize our process, similar to what most municipalities have done today, this is one of the leading companies that is doing it in their field, we have talked to other communities, we have talked to other companies, we're very confident in the capability of this software and what it brings to the table to achieve what the council and many residents who come to the counter and say, why aren't you guys digitized yet? Why do I have to have my architect or my engineer drive all the way up to Carefree from Phoenix and pay for their time? So this is driven by the residents, the residents in part helped to formulate that strategic plan and that initiative four years ago, and it was up to staff to coordinate and find the best software product that meets the goals of that strategic plan.
So for somebody, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, you know, for someone who started in the investment management world in 1986, we are keeping track of our investments in recipe cards in a recipe box, so though every single time we were able to bring technology in, which was probably 10 years away, we, there were improvements along that way, it was valuable to make sure that we had proper information in the right place, and probably early on when I was on council, I was talking to Gary about this, because if somebody does leave, then, some people leave, then all of their work, someone has to go figure it out, this way, it is all sitting on a computer, easily accessible, and can make the transition a lot smoother, so I'm a believer in bringing technology into the workplace when it can improve workflow, it can improve efficiency in the sense that the core competencies of Stacy are planning and zoning, not searching for papers, or getting on the phone because Debbie has a question with someone wondering where, what the status of something is, I think that it's better to have it all available online so people can focus on their core competencies, because once again, we are a very small staff, and people are very busy, and so we, improving efficiency to me is, for the entire community, all of the contractors that work with are, is vitally important.
So I would just say, you know, you mentioned your IT background, and so you probably can bring some, a good, interesting perspective to this, so if you have questions and ideas, I'm sure Stacy would be happy to hear from you.
Okay, and I appreciate the answers, and I guess the only thing I would state is that we are a little town of 3,800 residents, so when we compare ourselves to what Scottsdale's doing or Maricopa County, we do have to keep some subjectivity in mind there.
Fair enough, well, thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, members of council, once again, when we did our research, we looked and evaluated the types of communities that had this, one of them is our neighbor Cave Creek, there are many communities our size that have this type of software, and it just helps us more effectively, efficiently do our jobs, and allows the public to access the progress of their respective investment, their largest investment in their lives, their homes, and so it allows them to see where it is in the process, and allows for transparency.
So Gary, do they charge us based on our size? Is the absolute charge proportional to, would we pay the same price as Phoenix?
No, obviously, there's more things that Phoenix does that are attachments to this software, so it's a lot more complex, so a larger community has more complexity, complexity, we do not, so yes, we're paying our base rate for this respective software.
Well, and I'd imagine that.
Some of it is even based on storage space, correct? So larger municipalities require greater amounts of storage and, and for the end-user to be able to access, and so cost would probably be partially based on that as well.
Certainly, there is a variable there with storage, yes.
So that closes the call to the public, the public comment part of the discussion, is there any other comments or questions from the council? I might have one over there, so Mr. Vivas, I have a slip here for Call to the Public and for Item 9, do you wish to speak to item, this item as well?
Wait until you've done this item.
Oh, yes, yes, you can pick, we'll call you after Item 9 and Call to the Public. Okay, so hearing no comments or questions from the council, I would entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to proceed with entering a professional service contract with Granicus for the sum of $38,872.10, and TopCon for the sum of $2,898, to implement new permitting software for the first year.
Motion to approve authorization for the mayor to enter into contract with Granicus and TopCon for the total amount of, what did we say, it was 30, 41,000, it's not, it's not on my agenda here, $38,872.10 and $2,898 even.
Second. Any other public, or any other questions or comments? So hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, passage unanimously, thank you, thank you. Item number.
Thank you, Taylor.
Item number seven, approval of the proclamation proclaiming September 2024 is ovarian cancer Awareness Month in the town of Carefree, so I'll turn this over to Vice Mayor Croyer.
Thank you, Candace, do we have Rachel?
I'm gonna try again, I couldn't get her earlier, but I'm gonna do it right.
Well, she sent us, didn't she send us an email wondering, well, while you're doing that.
Take your call right now, so please hit the message after the beep.
September is ovarian cancer awareness month?
I can't get her, it goes to voicemail.
Okay.
Sorry.
And for those of you who don't know, ovarian cancer is the fifth-leading cause of death among women, 20,000 women nationwide will be diagnosed this year, almost 13,000 will die, and 310 women in Arizona will be afflicted and, and die, so it's important to bring it to the forefront, and Rachel Putnam is a survivor, and she calls herself a survivor, a thriver, and an advocate, and so she has given us a proclamation, which, we're not gonna read it, right?
No.
No, so John has it here, it's all framed, and so we will proclaim September ovarian cancer awareness month.
So the idea was, was that Rachel would be here to speak by the telephone, she'd be watching us on YouTube, make sure of the proclamation, but we'll send it to her tomorrow and take care of it, so, thank you, and.
Oh, we still need a motion.
Oh, yes, yep, absolutely, so I would entertain a motion to, I guess, approve the proclamation for, the proclamation proclaiming September 2024 is ovarian cancer awareness month in the town of Carefree.
I move that we do that.
Let's have Ken.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passage unanimously, thank you. Item number eight, review discussion and possible action to approve partner, partnering with Wild Joy, a company that focuses on Arizona experiences, to promote Carefree on social media platforms, and entering into a contract with Wild Joy in the amount of $10,000. Ms. Madison Garrett, you'll lead this discussion?
Hi, this is my third time up here, I'm probably not gonna be any better than last time, but I'm gonna try, I am touching today mainly on social media, and I'm also gonna be talking about social media influencers and proposing to partner with a company that I've vetted and talked to since about last year, so overview, I'm gonna go over the importance of social media, I'm gonna go over our social media statistics, I'm gonna go over the importance of social media influencers as well, and then I'm going to talk about Wild Joy and the partnership proposal I have with them. So, sales tax, we are a sales tax-run town, we are all paid by sales tax, all of our stuff is funded by sales tax, or at least a majority of it, and I believe, I can't remember the exact percentage, but I know most of it is paid by our visitors, people who come up here, they spend money on our businesses, they spend money on our restaurants, given our sales tax model, our social media efforts are focused mainly on making Carefree an attractive destination for visitors, I've found through our statistics that most of the people that follow us are not residents, so that's why when I post on social media, it's mainly to promote the town rather than to promote government-related meetings, I used to post about meetings, they were not getting much traction, I've started posting more about what our town offers, and those have been very successful, our social media channels are focused to Facebook and Instagram, we have a LinkedIn, but I do not post on that, we also have our YouTube, which is used for our, our government meetings as well, our, I'm gonna go over the overview statistics next, 'cause I, I think they're pretty interesting. I first wanna go over that 4.9 billion people use social media, this is expected to grow to 5.8 million, billion by 2027, these are all by Forbes, these statistics, 145 minutes a day are used by people, that's how much people spend on like Instagram, social media, any type of social media platform, that's what they use every day, it is a little sad, but that is kind of the reality, for an average of lifespan of 73 years, that means that we use 5.7 years on social media, we also have the statistic that 90% of users follow at least one brand on social media, and to me, Carefree is a brand, we are trying to get people to come up here, we are trying to get them to spend money, we are trying to get them to come back as well. The importance of social media is that it's one of the most effective marketing techniques in today's day and age, some of the main reasons are, we can reach a large audience from just a digital space, it improves visitor and visitor engagement, it's an effective tool to spread awareness on events, meetings as well, I do still post stories with links to our live streams, it's also very cost-effective in terms of most marketing efforts, it increases traffic to our website, 'cause it can be directly linked as well, it's effective brand storytelling, and it gives us a competitive advantage compared to other municipalities in the area. Our channels are Facebook and Instagram, those are our main ones, we have 7,000 followers on Facebook, we've gained 431 over the last year, Instagram, we have 2,310, these are not completely accurate, they, they change every single day, but we also gained 252 followers in the last year on Instagram as well. I'm gonna go over some statistics based on reach and visits, I'm gonna kind of briefly explain, reach is how many people come across our content on their, on their phones, it's when it pops up on their For You pages, or it pops up on their Facebook page, visits are when they click on our profile or our page, so that, it means they're taking an action, and they're interested in what we're, what we're offering. Reach, we reached over 105,000 people last year that organically came across our content, this is not paid, this is not, we didn't push this, this is just people that came across our content, this increased by 60% compared to last year's performances, our top-reaching posts were about the general plan draft and about a lost dog, Oakley, that was lost in, I believe, July or August, but that one reached quite a bit of people. Visits, we have 9.6,000, that's increased by 34% since last year as well, once again, the, they're very correlated, I will say, if there's a high reach, there's usually a high visit as well, because it means it's reached more people, more people tend to click, so that's why the general plan draft is also, I believe, up there. Yes.
Going, going back to that, so out of 105K reaches, almost 10% just resulted in visits.
Yes.
Seemingly, so is that exceptionally good, is that normal?
Yes, that's a good number, I will say, good numbers tend to be on the lower end of the range, even though we've reached 100,000 people, if we get 1,000 people that like it, that's still a pretty good, that's a good average in the marketing, marketing world.
So the ratio of visits to reach at 10%, that's pretty good, probably.
Yes, it is, especially since it's been growing.
Yeah.
Facebook, our demographics, we are 80% women, 18% men, that is also not very unlikely when it comes to social media, it's very women-dominated, I will also say, we also have more women in the world as well, our top five cities are Phoenix, Scottsdale, Cave Creek, and in fourth place is Carefree, and then it's Mesa, so this is where I was mentioning earlier, most of our followers are not Carefree residents, they're people that are in other areas of Arizona, so that to me speaks that they're visitors, they're not people that live here. Messaging as well, we, there's two different messagings, there's contacts and conversations, contacts are how many people have messaged us, and then there's conversations, which is how many people we have messaged, so that means if somebody contacts us on Facebook asking, hey, when is this event, and we respond back to them, that counts as people we've messaged, I've pushed out conversa, our Carefree connection, I sometimes push those out to people, so that's why our conversations are higher than our contacts, we have a 10.3% response rate, it's not great, that just basically means we, 10% of the time, we respond within 24 hours, we get a message, most messages actually come in on the weekends, and I don't really, I try not to look at my phone on the weekends, that's why they don't get responded to, I like to spend time with my dog and my fiance, so that's, I'm still working on that, I've been trying to work on it every day in the week, so I, I log in, I look at emails, and then I go and like comments, I respond to email, or not emails, but I respond to comments if people have any. Content performance, so content interactions, that includes sharing, that includes likes, that includes comments, and that includes saves, we have had 6.3 interactions over the last year, that's a 20% increase compared to last year's interactions, and then I just like breaking down, you know, it kinda shows what people like and what they find interesting when we post about it, by likes, Dick, the Dick Van Dyke Throwback Thursday that I did was very well received, so was the Sundial Throwback Thursday and the Wildlife Wednesday, that was actually a photo that was given to me by a business owner in the area, and it's really cool, I can't remember what it's called, but it's a very cool, I think, Code of Monday, but it's really cool, and then top three posts by reach, once again, reach is when it just comes across, across a person's page, we reached 11,000 people with the Sundial post, we reached 5.9 with the Dick Van Dyke, and we reached 4.1 with the Cooler by 6 Degrees post that I did, these are just very interesting to me as a marketer, and that's part of what my job is, is it tells me what people find interesting, and it helps guide what I post, and it helps make kind of that marketing plan of what I put out to the visitors. So then, I did the same thing for Instagram, so I'll go quickly through it, we reached 5,000 people on Instagram, this has decreased by 47% compared to last year, I will say that this is definitely because we didn't remain consistent, you can see there are huge dips right before October, and then right in the middle of October, I would say that's when, there was no, no one in my position, so there was no, there was no posts going out, so that the reach significantly decreased that 10. So that the reach significantly decreased that ten. But you can see that it's been very, it's been fluctuating since then. Visits, we had one point four thousand, and this has actually increased compared to last year by eighteen percent, which, to me, overall, this is good because this means not only, yes, our reach is down, but this means whoever we are reaching is more interested in what we're posting. So we might not be reaching as much, but we're actually engaging more with these people.
Madison?
Yes.
Are there any programs or any companies that allow us to buy more reach and to target the people that we want to reach?
Yes, that is almost exactly what I'm proposing today. No, you're good, you're on the right track. So the way to do that is with paid ads. You can pay for them yourself and you can post them, and I'll kind of, I'll go over that in a second. Or you can pay other people to reach their audience. And that's kind of the initial, what I'm proposing today. So I'll just go over this real quick. Age and gender were also dominated by women, seventy-five percent. You can also see the age groups were mainly dominant in the forty-five to fifty-five age range. And then our second, second both running are thirty-five to forty-four and fifty-five to sixty-four. Once again, the cities are almost the exact same, Phoenix, Scottsdale, Cave Creek, Carefree, and Mesa. We've gotten less messaging on Instagram and that's okay. I think most of our audience is on, actually, most of our audience is on Facebook. We have seven thousand there. We had forty-seven people contact us and we messaged eighteen. And this is where it gets a little, a little bit lower. I will say, most of the contacts are coming from Facebook or Instagram stories, where I post videos that only last twenty-four hours of the town or something that I'm featuring. And the last twenty-four hours, people can like it, people can put clapping hand emojis to it. I don't know what I did. So usually I don't respond to those, I like them and I move on because nobody's asking a question and nobody's requesting the information.
So why would we only leave it up for twenty-four hours? Are we repaying for the twenty-four hours? And if not, why don't we just sort of leave it up for a while?
So Instagram stories are a different type of post. There's posts that stay up all the time, and those I post about four days a week. Stories are just more, they're quick format content. They're only supposed to be up for twenty-four hours, that's how all Instagram stories work. But they're usually there to just kind of show throughout the day, random things that are happening. That's why I post meeting links as well on Instagram stories. I post them so they stay up for twenty-four hours, that people can click on the link to join the livestream before the meeting starts, and then it goes away. So it doesn't completely clog up our feed as well. I like to try and keep it full of pretty pictures. Content performance, our content interactions, we were at six point three thousand as well. So they're the exact same as Facebook and Instagram. Instagram gets a lot more engagement than Facebook. We also had very similar top posts. Dick Van Dyke received a hundred and twenty-three. We had a Holiday Lights video that I posted that reached a hundred and thirteen, that was liked by a hundred and thirteen and the Sundial as well was also liked. Posts by reach, all three of them, if you see the video icon, it basically displays that these were videos. These were not photos, these were videos, and those, on average, reach a lot more than just photos do. That's why all three of them are up there. We reached a thousand with the Talk to Our Speedy Burger Tavern video that I did. The Holiday Lights also had a lot of reach and so did the Sundial Timelapse. So this is where I'm going to get into paid ads. We did one paid ad this last year, and it was for Earth Day. I spent a hundred and fifteen dollars to promote and push out our event. And the posts that I did, there was two different posts. We read, the impressions is, the best way to explain this is impressions are not unique to one person. Reach is unique to one person. So nine thousand people were reached, but one person could get three impressions, that it showed up on their feed three times and that would all count as impressions. So there were twelve thousand of those, there were nine thousand reached. There was a hundred and forty-eight likes, which is higher on average. And then there was a hundred and eighty-nine clicks and then sixty-seven event responses. Our last event last year for the Carefree Earth Day was about, I believe, at fourteen people. This year we got a hundred and twelve. So this was successful and this was for a hundred and fifteen dollars. We also had a really good turnout this year, I believe. And then I'm also going to go into, this kind of plays into influencers. Influencers are the digital version of word of mouth. They are the people that go out there and tell people, hey, this is great, this is amazing, you need to try this. The reason why it's digital is because it reaches a lot more people. You can only tell so many people about a restaurant in person, but you can tell ten thousand online about a restaurant. It's the strongest form of marketing, word of mouth. I mean, I will say I'm more influenced by somebody telling me they really like this restaurant and I'm more willing to go to that than I just see it on the web. Influencers are a tool that are, it's the best way to reach beyond our audience, the audience we cannot reach. It's, I will say that there's a successful story just here in Carefree with the English Rose Tea Room, where I believe during COVID, she was posted by somebody online. It reached over a million views and she was booked in COVID. She was booked almost every day. So that's why influencers are really impactful. I mean, even in one of the harshest times for businesses, she was still thriving. Influencer marketing is more about a relationship between a brand and an influencer. The influencer promotes what we have, the brands or products or services through various media outlets. And influencers are trusted figures within niche communities. So there's people that are trusted within the Native American communities. There's people that are trusted in the food communities. And then I will go into who I'm focusing on. And they also have very loyal followings. I mean, people follow them for suggestions. It helps us acquire better customers. Traditional marketing methods have decreased their effectiveness. This also helps maximize our reach to influencers. It's generally affordable compared to most marketing methods and it's considered the fastest way to acquire customers. Some statistics are thirty-nine percent of marketers invest ten to twenty percent of their marketing budgets in influencers nowadays. Six point five dollars on average are earned for every dollar you spend on an influencer. And then fifty percent of millennials trust influencers. The reason why I focus on millennials here is because that is one of our lowest demographic groups. The twenty-five to forty-four, forty-four age range is one of our lowest ones. So I want to boost that up. Those are people that have disposable income, who have families or have friends that they can come up here and they can spend money. So I want to get into Wild Joy. This is a company I've personally followed for several years, or a couple of years. It was founded in twenty nineteen. It was, it's focused on Arizona experiences. It's generally about finding things to do in Carefree. That is what she is inspired to do. They have six hundred and forty, I believe more now, followers combined through all their social media platforms. Fifty percent of them are in Phoenix and sixty percent are in the eighteen to forty-four age range and sixty-five percent are female. They also have a Facebook where they have two thousand followers as well. And they also got, just recently got recommended, a letter of recommendation from the Chicago Cubs endorsing them, saying that they were great to work with and they were very successful. The demographics, they're a little fuzzy and I apologize, but I wanted to kind of quickly go into it. Fifty-four, fifty-four percent are in Phoenix on TikTok. Twenty-three percent are in Phoenix on Instagram. Thirty-nine percent and thirty-eight percent are in that twenty-five to thirty-five age range, that millennial age range I was saying that we are missing out on. This is our target audience and it's one of our lowest categories. That's why I really want to drive home with them. They also recently had an event actually with Harold's. They had a Lucky Lady Lion Dancing event and it was very successful. So they know this area. They've done videos on Humboldt Mountain. They have done videos about the Carefree Tea Room. They've done a lot of videos of things up here in Carefree, so they're very knowledgeable. Do you have a question?
So, yeah, so one of these items says, we host monthly make friends events. So do you foresee us doing anything like that?
I could see us, if this partnership is successful, I could see us doing that. I'm not sure entirely what that entails in terms of pricing, like if we're paying them or for just providing them a space to do an event. But I would be willing to look into that. And I think it'll be very interesting to have something in our pavilion because we have a very beautiful space to do events. So I've already spoken with her and we've already started brainstorming some ideas. We've talked about an event roundup to be posted this month, hopefully, that will cover on all these fortieth events that we have coming up. It will cover on all of our yearly events that we have as well. So our Veterans Day, it could cover the Kiwanis, it could cover the Christmas tree lighting. It could cover all of these. That's what's great about these roundups is it just lists all of our events. The second one we were looking at is the Carefree Day Trip, partnering with hopefully Savannah on showing, you know, what you could do up here all day in Carefree, you know, from sunrise to sunset, what we offer up here. Another video that she says is very successful with her audience is Five Things to Do. And so we're looking at Five Things to Do in Carefree. This will focus on more likely the gardens. It will focus on shopping local. It will focus on the recreational activities we have as well with Time to Ride AZ and grinding gears. These just encompass what, these will encompass what Carefree is and what Carefree has to offer. That's my ultimate goal with this. Her campaign includes communication, so they will schedule meetings with us. We'll talk one-on-one all the time. I can also schedule meetings with any other mayor if you ever have, you know, want to schedule meetings with her to talk with her. They have a full team, they travel. So when we pay them, they're using that money to come travel, to do things up here, to spend that money, to show what we have off. Content approval. It says if requested, but we will request content approval. They will be sending it to us and we will say, yes, this is good to go, or hey, we want to tweak a few things. They also will send us analytics about thirty to forty-five days after they post the content to show us how it's been doing. Because I personally, we can't see that unless it's just likes on social media. Timeline, the timeline is, we strategize. There's a contract, so that would come after this, after we agree that we'll be working with them. There'd be a deposit of fifty percent. It's, the full package is, I'll go into the next slide. The full package is ten thousand dollars. It's monsoon, that's the monsoon package. And I, it's the three videos. It'll be posted on two platforms and it will also be posted, actually, I believe it'll also be on Facebook as well, so three platforms. And then also on IG stories, those twenty-four hour, those are actually really useful. So they value this at sixteen. I value it as a lot more because I believe what we're going to be presenting to her audience is going to result in a lot more than just what she's valued it at. I, I'll just go back real quick. After they shoot the content, there'll be approval, they'll post it, they'll send the analytics, and then we pay them the other fifty percent. So we pay five thousand upfront and then five thousand at the end. So I kind of did a little break even. So what would, what would it look like if we just needed to make our money back? To break even, we would only need to have, please disregard, I did my math wrong, so that first paragraph is actually completely wrong. The math on the right is correct. So if we had only ten thousand views, and that's about their average, I would say most of their videos actually hit fifty, five hundred to eight hundred thousand views. So if we only had ten thousand views and we had nine percent of those people, so nine thousand people spend forty dollars up here. So if they come, they came, spent a dinner, bought two shirts, you know, bought a few shirts, we would make, not we, but the revenue would be thirty, three hundred and sixty hundred thousand. And then if we made three percent on that with our sales tax, we'd be at the ten thousand eight hundred mark. So that's about breaking even. I think personally, with the popularity of Carefree and people that are probably going to rediscover Carefree through these videos, we're going to be making a lot more than that. So I think, you know, we're not worried about breaking even, but we're looking at actually making a pretty good profit off of this.
So a view, that means it just shows up on your screen and then you can either click on it or not?
Yes.
And so you estimate, you anticipate nine percent of those folks who have a view of it will actually come here?
Yes, I actually believe that we'll get more views and then we'll also have a higher percentage of people that come from those views as well. This is just kind of the base point of what, the minimum we would have to have in order to make our money back. So that was just my initial thought.
I would just say that salespeople always inflate everything, so I wouldn't inflate what she's telling you just from experience.
No.
But I think it's an interesting idea. Is there any way that they're going to be able to prove to us what they've generated?
I think that would be generally up to us. The way I would measure this is, one, we would see sales tax, see if it's grown. Two, we would also, yeah.
But Gary, how long does sales tax lag?
There's a two-month lag in the collection of sales tax. One of the things that Steve has access to is some mapping with cellphone data. So you can see the import of people from the broader trade area. And so we'll see if there's a spike associated with some of these.
Okay, I thought it was longer, so that's not, yeah, okay.
The Manova, he mentioned exactly what I was going to mention next, was Steve's mapping software. So to see when a video is posted, then I would track how much, if there's a spike in people after that.
Right.
So I have a couple of questions in a comment. First of all, Gary, do we have a, we have a marketing budget? Or would this be paid for out of general fund or how does that work?
This is budgeted within our digital marketing budget under Matty's department.
Okay, so it's already allocated.
Yes.
So it's two hundred dollars a week that we're spending on, basically on advertising to get a reach in the potential thousands, right?
Yes.
And to reach a different generation of spenders to come up here, of which we have follows, most are from outside of this area. So we're targeting our audience very carefully. I'm a big believer in social media. You know, I started with a podcast five years ago, which Mayor Peterson was a guest on here locally. And we grew, as a result, a lot of it of social media to a nationally syndicated radio show on a hundred stations across the country. And a lot of it was because of our reach and in our audience and our clientele and serving high school and college athletics. So I think this is a very wise investment. I think it's on the low end, actually. I think it's a steal, considering what we could potentially be drawing. It's a good trial, it's already built into your marketing budget. It's two hundred bucks a week. I mean, that's nothing for something like this, so, yeah.
You make a good point. I will say the two hundred dollars a week, I spent a hundred and fifteen dollars to promote one post and I got twelve thousand just from that one post. So if we get twelve thousand every week, we're rolling in quite a bit. I also wanted to mention their past partnerships. They are not just some company that, you know, I just found on the internet and I was like, oh, I think they're cool. They've worked with a lot of other people. They've worked with Visit Tucson, they've worked with Yuma, Flagstaff, Visit Chandler, Visit Mesa, Visit Tempe. I mean, you can see they've worked with a ton of other municipality or at least tourism and Chamber of Commerce organizations. In conclusion, social media is extremely important for our town. And we're a destination and we're trying to market that ourselves as a destination. And the best way to do that locally, statewide, and nationally is through our social media. We've been steadily increasing, growing over the past year and I think that that's going to spike if we do this. I think also, I will mention that that is also a way I can measure the success is how many follows we get from this. Because we will be tagged in these posts and people will click on that and they will follow us. Our Instagram is lacking in terms of reach compared to Facebook. So I think because they are focused on Instagram, this is a great way to strengthen our Instagram platform and our audience base there. The influencers are untapped in Carefree. We've never done anything like this and, you know, I'd like to bring fresh and new ideas, so that's why I'm bringing it here. I think this could be very beneficial in boosting visitors' revenue, event attendance, and I think this will also create repeat visitors. So not people that are coming once, but people that'll come back. And that's it.
Okay, I just have a couple of comments. One, I think it's really critical that we measure, or try to measure, what results from this. So the influencer, she can give us data probably based on visits and clicks and all this kind of stuff. And that'll be interesting. But it doesn't directly translate into sales tax revenue.
Yes.
We, as a town, through Steve Popapex's software, we can track, I guess, increases in visitors to our town. We don't necessarily know if they're spending money, at least we know if they're coming. And if we have data year over year, then we can certainly measure the impact. So say we do this in, I'm not sure when you're going to do it, October, November, December, or something. So do we have data that goes back last year in November, December? We do, okay, so we can measure that. And I have just a comment about sales tax revenue. So I have the impression that some of our businesses, they don't religiously send us their, or file their sales tax revenue with the state month after month. Sometimes they may hold it. So correlate a given month's worth of sales tax revenue to a prior month or a year ago is kind of hit and miss. Any other comments?
Just one, you clarified it at the end. So the way
So, the way this new target audience will be connecting with us is that they'll click a link to our either town site, Facebook, Instagram, and that'll bring them to our site. Okay, and so, we will be, so your, this group targets the millennials, and then we will continue to do our Facebook, Instagram marketing. But will we be linking to anything on Wild Joy in our Facebook, Instagram, or will we, or is it just one way?
So, the way it works usually is you're, there, there's such thing as collaboration posts now. So, they would post something in collaboration with us, and both of our names will show up on that post, and they will both show up on our pages. So, our page will show their name. And I, I mean, I will share this as well, you know, to our audience so they can see these videos as well, because we're not the ones making them. I think that's, I think that answers the question a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll be kind of pushing it as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
I just, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I'll just say, measuring is critical. So, to me, this is an experiment, and if we have any ambition to do it again, it needs to show that it's productive.
Yep. I will measure as much and as, any variable as I can.
It's probably not as scientific as we would like it to be.
No, no.
But we do have some benchmarks.
I will say it's easier to track than a billboard.
Definitely.
Or a TV commercial, I mean, or a radio commercial. I mean, it's, it's, it's advertising, but you'll get data points back from it.
Well, radio and TV have regular rating services, but, but we'll, we'll have enough information to give us an indication of how it's working.
Okay, any other, any other comments or questions? Okay, we have no public comment. So, I would open, I would entertain a motion to approve a contract in partnership with Wild Joy for a total cost of ten thousand dollars for an all-inclusive social media campaign.
Motion to approve a contract with Wild Joy for a total cost of ten thousand dollars for all-inclusive social media campaign.
Second.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Here we none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passing, Ashley, nice job, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine. Review, discussion, and possible action to approve the mayor to enter into a joint agency agreement with the Maricopa Association of Governments for the Maricopa Association of Governments Electric Vehicle Charging Infrastructure Program, and for the mayor to enter into a contract with a qualified consultant selected from a competitive, or through a competitive bid process, to prepare an electric vehicle sighting plan for an amount not to exceed the program refund limit of a hundred thousand dollars. And as Mr. Popapek will lead us through this, although you're already, but just a comment, a couple of comments before we start. So, Carefree historically, we have not gotten a lot of grants from MAG. Most of those grants have gone to big cities and towns, Phoenix, Mesa, Gilbert. But in the last eighteen months, it has changed dramatically. So, MAG is helping us out with this, this study for Pima Road and Cave Creek Road intersection, and about four miles south of there. They're helping us out with a study at Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road, which will go from that intersection, which is north of there, belongs to us, they're past Lowe's. And now, there's an opportunity for, working with MAG, for grants for an EV charging station. So, we have no EV charging stations in our town for, for public access. The first step, and we applied for a grant for a study, and we were approved. And the study allows for up to a hundred thousand dollars to perform the sighting. There's not a study, it's a sighting plan, a sighting plan. And it's a hundred percent covered by MAG, so it costs us nothing. And my guess is it'll be much less than a hundred thousand dollars. And that's one of the things we're going to look at this evening. And then, if it is, we must get it back to them by the end of the year, and then they will, will be in a position to go out for an RFP for installing some EV charging stations. And again, the county, through the federal government, will pay for ninety-five percent of those expenses. So, for us, it's a great deal, in my estimation. It is an economic driver in the town, because people will come and they will be able to charge their vehicles, they'll pay for that when they're here, they pay for the electricity that they're using. My guess is we will also get some money for, for our trouble and the using of, of some parking places, which will be strategically placed so they don't compromise folks on Easy Street who want to use our businesses there. So, I think it's, I think what we have before us is a, is a good thing. So, anyway, I'll let you take the discussion and, and tell us what we're into it for.
Mayor and council, that concludes my presentation. No, Mayor, and the one thing I, I think people should understand is, is that, you know, when we talk about being part of things like Maricopa Association of Governments, or there's, there's a lot of state agencies, there's a lot of state groups, there's a lot of regional cooperation that goes on. And so, you know, when we start looking at our leadership here in town, our leadership is, is involved in a lot of those particular things. They go to those meetings, they advocate for this community, and they compete against the, the big communities. And so, this was a great opportunity for us, and I know, you know, the mayor in particular, he spends a lot of time doing this. So, when you start thinking about what's on his to-do list, this is one of these types of things, and it's looking out for the best interest of how we fit in within this, this metropolitan area. So, thank you, Mayor, for, for your involvement in that. And again, the, the, there's a lot of words here, but it's the Electrical Vehicle Charging Infrastructure Program. It literally was just a, a program that was, it was coming out of funding through the, the federal government to reduce emissions. It passed on through to the state, the state passed it on to the county and the, or to, to the county, and Maricopa Association of Governments created this program that they're calling the Electrical Vehicle Charging Infrastructure Program. And this, these are the established goals that they had, and really, these goals are, are to create economic viability within the communities, you know, or help support economic viability, support employers, and support employment. They were looking at areas that are unserved or underserved. I would consider us more of an unserved area, so you start thinking about how they do this. So, MAG, people don't know, is part of regional transportation planning, is one of the key things that they do. And so, when they start looking at that, they're looking at where there are gaps inside of that regional transportation model. And with EVs being part of that model now, being able to find places where people can actually charge EVs has become something of interest that falls in line with what these interests are through the, the federal government and the state. And then, again, one of the things when you're, if you're an EV owner, is just making sure that you can get back home. I've actually seen a few EVs towed out of Carefree to go to a charging station, because, well, there's a map that shows that there are two EV chargers that used to be actually right in front of Gallery Michelle. And those are gone now, but they still show up, and so people think they're there, and it's created somewhat of a problem. And then, again, one of the, the other things that we're looking at the program was really supporting the employment base, or if there's things in government to where we were utilizing EVs for our fleet. That really isn't something that, that we, as, as a community, really have an issue with. We don't have a huge fleet. So, they're looking also at, you know, larger communities like Scottsdale and Phoenix, and so that's part of what plays into this. I feel like I missed something here. That's all right. So, what are the Carefree benefits to, to having EV charging stations? It's obviously more appealing for visitors, a lot more people are buying electrical, electric vehicles, and one of the things we're really looking to do is, is broaden our reach as far as visitors coming in from the local metropolitan area. And so, you know, some of these folks might be coming from Buckeye, they can be coming from longer distances. And so, to be able to get here, you know, they could be discouraged if they felt like they couldn't actually make it here and get back, or it, it was, you know, there's a lot of rigmarole to be doing that. And so, it helps to support those businesses, you know, people who buy EVs spend money too. It supports, supports the local residents who actually have, and business owners and employees that actually have EVs. And so, if they need to get a charge, they can get a charge at one of these, these particular stations. It supports the hotel guests that are in town. So, a lot of, if you actually go look at where a lot of these EVs come from, they come from Hertz, if you're buying a used one. And so, a lot of people are, are actually renting Teslas and other electrical, electric vehicles as when they visit the valley. It creates, again, a stronger regional partnership with, with MAG and some of our local communities. And then, again, it doesn't cost us really anything to, to do this, so. There, there's two parts to this program in phasing. The first one is a sighting plan, and kind of dot pointed what the sighting plan was to originally do. And, and, and the way that MAG had structured this was, they were kind of thinking more like Phoenix. They were thinking more like Scottsdale or Glendale, where they're large communities, and they were just trying to identify locations. So, when they were looking at sighting, they were thinking, okay, well, you know, if we only got this limited amount of money, and it's the city of Phoenix, this can go in like five thousand different locations. And we don't necessarily have that issue, we, we got one spot where we really can really put these, these electric vehicle charging stations. And so, and so, we actually are, are looking at it from a different perspective on how we're going to go through this site plan process, where we're not looking for locations, but we actually know the locations. The location, general location, we're going to be looking at specific sites. And so, as we start looking at how we're approaching this, we're going to identify the locations, the number of chargers, we'll actually do some site planning to get, so we can see what this thing's going to look like, the available power infrastructure, we're looking for a utility plan, you know, how we fit within the position of the overall EV grid, and then benefits to serve the community. And everybody can read this, I don't need to keep, keep going on it. But then, there's a second phase, and so, the second phase is, is the implementation phase. And hopefully, when we're done with the sighting plan phase, that we'll actually have what we need to just go out and reach out for this implementation phase. And these are both competitive rounds, and so even though we get through the sighting plan, we still have to compete for the next round of funding. Though I think we'd actually have a good shot, because we're going to be probably a small dot in a big sea of funding. And, you know, they've already accepted us to do the sighting plan, so I'm pretty sure we'd probably have a great shot at being selected through the second round as well. And again, this would be up to two million dollar grant. I don't think we're going to touch two million dollars in here, you know, if we do four or five maybe chargers, I think that'd probably be about it. And so, I, I don't see us having that level of cost. But in this second phase, there is a five point seven percent match that the community has to come up with, so. Which is why when we go through the process for the site planning, one of the things that we added in when I talked to MAG was making sure that we get estimated budgetary costs, so we understand what our exposure is before we even make application for the second phase. So, the council request is really, it's a two-part process. You know, what we, we could have done is just had the mayor sign the, the intergovernmental agreement, the joint agency agreement, and then we could have come back, gone through the RFP process and selected it and brought it back to council. But what we wanted to do was do this, so everybody understands what we're doing before we actually enter into the intergovernmental agreement. Understanding that time is of the essence, though, we have to have this done by the end of the year. And so, as the scheduling goes, this is really the first meeting we had an opportunity to do this. So, there's two things that we're looking at doing. One is entering into the joint agency agreement with MAG, which you've been able to see. And that just allows us to go through the process, get a consultant, and then get reimbursed. And then, the second is, is to actually, as we go, I'm going to, we already have the RFP put together that will go out and get published, I believe, this week, Candace, is what we're looking to publish that. And then, we'll-
It'll go out for publication, they won't publish until probably Friday or Monday.
Friday or Monday, so, so this week, by Friday or Monday, we'll have it published. We'll look to, try to have somebody selected by the first of October. And one of the things we'll be looking to do is make sure they provide a contract, so we can move through that. And then, so we're asking for approval upfront to go ahead and be able to enter into that contract, but knowing that it will not exceed the amount that we're going to get reimbursed. So, at the end of the day, there will be no cost to us, even though we'll make the expenditure.
The first part is no cost, the second part is a small matching.
So-
So, it could be like ten or eleven thousand dollars, is that what I was?
So, in the, in this first phase, for what I'm asking for now, this is the full one hundred percent reimbursable. So, we're only doing the, the first phase right now, and that's one hundred percent reimbursed by MAG. So, there's no cost at this point to us, unless we go to phase two and we get selected for that, then there would be a five, five point seven percent cost.
Right, okay.
That's why I wanted to make sure it was clear, because it is a little confusing. I, I just wanted to go ahead and put like what the request for proposal is going to look like, since we are kind of asking for the approval ahead of time, to go ahead and enter into this contract. This is basically what we're, two things here, there's one, that's an analysis part, and then what we're going to be looking for is, whatever we get back from a consultant is going to be a document, a deliverable, that's going to be, allow us to just submit that document for the phase two implementation. And so, what I did is I just broke it up into one, two, one, one, this is really, really good numbering, so. Yeah, Gary, did you do that to me while I wasn't looking? So, and the first one is just going to be summary of the process we're going to be asking for, so they can show their methodology. Two is the summary of the, the goals that I already shared with you, and what we'll do is ask the consultant to just do a summary for each one of those particular goals. And then, it's looking at the findings, and then really addressing the analysis. And that A through O that you see there is actually straight from the, the guidelines that were created by MAG. So, we know that what we're going to be evaluating and how it's going to be evaluated is exactly the way they've asked for it. And I did clarify this scope of work with MAG. And they've blessed this scope of work to make sure that everything in here would be covered from the reimbursed amount. That's why I wanted to share it with you. And so, what we're looking at are level-three universal chargers. And what a level-three charger is, is the quick charger. And the way these level-three universal chargers work is, like, so you have Tesla chargers, which are really geared towards Teslas, but they can handle other vehicles through some type of, of hardware that you can connect to your device. And then, every other EV company basically uses the same universal charger. So, Tesla users then would have to get the special device that teaches these universal chargers. MAG is requesting that we use the universal chargers, and so that's the route that we would go. One thing we're not going to look at is not using prime parking spots. So, when we start looking at what we own, and one of the requirements was that they would really like this to be on public property, so there isn't private property acquisition, or they're not dealing with private, that we can bring the utilities and that we're utilizing space that we already own. So, we're looking at the existing parking field that we have on, in and around Easy Street and on Ho-Hum. And the hatched areas that you see there, the areas that we're going to, you know, that I kind of identified as, as areas that, that we can examine, and then we start looking and bring a consultant in that they can start looking at these specific areas. And what we didn't want to do is put it directly in front of, of, of businesses where we already have a high volume of in-and-out parking. What we wanted to do is make it so that these people could, you know, come and charge their vehicle. And on average, I think the, the average charge is right around fifteen minutes. So, these sites are generally managed, and so you prepay to, you know, if you have an electric vehicle, in a lot of cases, you'll prepay, and you just show up, you, you plug in, and you have an account, or you pay with a credit card at that place to, to purchase it. And then, they have a lot of security and mechanisms that don't allow for people to just sit there. And so, it's, it's part of the business model that we need to look at, because we're not going to own, operate, and manage these things at the end of the day, that we will have to bring in some kind of company that can manage this particular, you know, and how that works, to make sure that people don't park and sit, and sit there and stay there. Though I will say, as part of the EV culture, my son bought an EV, and so I'm starting to understand how it works. It's pretty slick how these cars just pull in, you don't even like know where half these places are. They just pull in, parking garages, and five, ten minutes later, they're back on the road and they go. And the idea is, is that we can take the EVs, let them charge, and then it may be a more remote location, and then they could just get back in their car and go park somewhere else. And that's typically how that, that, that works. And so, you know, I have got my preferences here, I really would like to see it, you know, kind of, I don't have the, you know, you can see the arrow there where it says Bloody Basin. You know, that area that's just right there, it's like, probably like the most, least-used area that we have. I think that would fit perfectly. But we'll let the consultants evaluate, because I don't know what the, the electrical infrastructure looks like there. They're going to evaluate it based on access and some other factors.
Do we make any money off of these?
That's one of the things that we'll need to look at as we move forward. I mean, our goal is, is to really just bring people with EVs here, and our, our business is, government is not to run EV charging stations. So, is there an opportunity to where you can license- So, is there an opportunity to where you can license or franchise or, you know, lease or however? I'm sure that's what we'll end up doing. And so when we get to even part of this process in siting, we'll ask some of the questions as far as how these business models work. When I was talking to MAG, they really were kind of leery about that being refundable and part of the original process, but it's not to say that the consultants can't give us guidance on that, or we can't find out on our own what these business models look like. And then we can incorporate that and make that part of the implementation process as well, that, you know, they would help us through the business modeling and how we would monetize this, or at least not make it cost anything, so.
No sales tax revenue? Sales tax revenue? We're selling, power is being sold in our community.
You know, that's a good question. I'd have to look, you know, I know there's no, I think there's no sales tax on gas, but I would say that, you know, the electricity, I'm sure, I, that's a, I don't have the answer on how they're doing it, especially with this MAG program. But my guess is if there's a private entity that's, that would be managing this, you know, there is a utility tax that people pay for utility usage. So I would assume there is, but I'm not 100% positive how they're making, they're doing it with EV charging. So I can check into that.
I wasn't aware that it only takes 15 minutes to charge a car.
It's about, on average, when somebody is, you know, out, say they leave their home, and they got a full charge, for them to kind of charge back up to a place where they need to get back or whatever, I would say on average, this is around 15, maybe 20 minutes. And like, my son's car charges within 30 for a full charge on a supercharger.
Well, these would be fast chargers, whatever that's worth.
Yeah, so they're superchargers, they're Level Three superchargers, and they charge very fast.
And going back to compensation, I mean, we would be, they would be using our parking places, so I think we should be compensated somehow, but it all depends on what models are out there, I don't know the answer to that.
Right.
But it would seem fair to me that we would be compensated some amount.
Yeah, there could have to be some kind of compensation. I think we would, I think, we just can't give it away, even with, even though it's in a redevelopment area, I think we'd still need to try to find a way to not gift anything to any private entity that might come in and operate this program. And I talked about it a little bit with MAG, and I don't think they really 100% have thought through fully on how communities might approach this. But I think they'd offer it more like an open-end flexibility to kind of figure out the strategies that work best for each community. But yeah, I don't see us, like I said, it's not something we're going to try to go in and make a bunch of money on. I think it's more in the lines that we just don't want to make sure that it's a negative, has a negative impact on our parking, and it doesn't have a negative impact on costs, you know, like there's power usage and everything else, and that it at least pays for itself and then brings people here.
Great, well, thank you. You have another slide, I think.
Yeah, so just the timing, we've kind of walked through this already. You know, obviously, our goal is to get this done by the end of the year. And so, it's going to be fairly quick, but we'll have three, three weeks to be able to put this on the street. And, you know, I've already had a couple consultants reach out to me who'd be interested in doing this, so we'll send it directly to them as well. And then I just, I know it's a long, it's a mouthful, so I put it up there for you.
Thank you. Okay, anything else?
That's it. Any questions?
Questions or comments from council? So hearing that we have one public comment, Mr. John Nitski.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, a couple of comments. One, in terms of getting paid to do this, that's not going to happen. I mean, EV chargers are a public convenience. So if anything else, putting EV chargers up here is more a marketing ploy than anything else. I mean, you're not going to get anybody, I don't believe, to pay you for the use of an EV. They're paying for the use of an EV when they put in their credit card to charge, to charge the car. That's point number one. Point number two, in terms of, I'm glad to see there was a scope of work that you prepared. What I didn't see is any deliverables and timelines associated with those. So, I would encourage you to put, to put some of those in, because the scope of work is multifaceted. And so, coming from the consulting field, if you give a guy a hundred thousand, if you give a consultant a hundred thousand dollar budget, they'll manage to spend a hundred thousand dollars. So my point is, put some specific deliverables in there, so that you can track the project from start to finish. My next point is, a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, given that you've got very limited sites where you can put this. So, you know, that's just, that's just a comment. The other comment is, quite frankly, I think you should develop some partnerships. For example, you should have a partnership with the hotel. There are lots of hotels that have EV chargers on their sites. And I don't see any reason why we can't do that here. You know, those parking spaces for the hotels are not full, they're usually very empty. Even when we had the two EV chargers that we had, they were mostly vacant. Part of the reason was, most of the time, they didn't work. But they were still nonetheless vacant. But there are limited sites to put these. So I can't imagine somebody or us having to spend a hundred thousand dollars to figure out what the sites are. Because again, Phase One is not to look at infrastructure, it's not to plan for infrastructure, it's not to plan for the cost of the infrastructure, et cetera, as I understand that that's all part of Phase Two. So basically, Phase One, unless I misunderstand, is basically looking at where do we put these things, and how many of these things do we put in? And just to your comment about, we're not going with Tesla superchargers, but we're using the fast chargers that everyone can access, keep in mind that if you have only a couple, you're going to have cars lined up, waiting for the first car to get off, for the second car to get on. I've experienced this, I own an EV, my relatives own an EV, and it's not as problem-free as you think. Now, that's not to suggest that we don't need them, I do, I think we do. But I think situating them in a way that they're close to the business, that they're close to the restaurant, I think you can do a joint project with the hotel, I think you also need to talk to the chamber, to see where they see the most traffic for their group of businesses, because that's where you want to put in the chargers, in my opinion.
Okay, well, thank you. And so, the comment about the hotel, that's worth exploring. I think there might be an issue there, this federal dollars on a private piece of property may be problematic, but it's worth asking MAG about that and exploring it.
So, Steve, excuse me.
So, again, unless I missed something, now, if you can go back to the previous slide, that's your timeline, right? So the complete deliverable at the end of the year, right? So you've laid out a timeline. Secondly, regarding the cost, that hundred thousand dollars that you're asking for is completely reimbursed by the MAG, correct?
Yeah, so let me explain the hundred thousand dollars. We actually went in with a dollar amount, a lot less than that, when we requested the MAG funding. MAG said, yeah, just do it a hundred thousand dollars, and whatever is, whatever it is, just make sure you've got enough money to cover it. So, my feeling is, is it's not even getting anywhere near a hundred thousand dollars. That's what they allotted to us. We've just set the maximum, being that we're not going to do anything that's going to go above what MAG would be willing to reimburse.
But even so, they're reimbursing it completely. So you're asking us for the amount tonight, and it's, you're going to get it back from them.
Right, and it's, yep, so yeah, it'll be completely reimbursed, but what we wanted to do is make sure actually, we went through the public, or the public bid process, that this is competitive. So that should keep even the cost down. But to be honest with you, I don't think MAG seems like it was like a hundred thousand dollars, like, okay, well, that's what they expect, so, but we don't. We're going to try to keep that cost down, as much as we can, it's still public money.
Yeah, I think most cities and towns are probably looking at multiple sites, and probably, each site costs X, and if you got four of them in a big city, then you got 4X. We're probably looking at 1X.
Yeah, and Mr. Nitski brings up a good point, that in most cases for these communities, they are doing more of a generic siting analysis, because they're big cities and they're going to evaluate hundreds, if not thousands, of sites, or however they're going to do that analysis. We don't necessarily have to do that. So MAG was like really accommodating and saying that different communities can do this in different ways. That's why I wanted to make sure that we, I went through and sat down and had a call with MAG to make sure that this particular scope is something that they would support. And so one of the things that we wanted to do was, and this is talking with some of the consultants, is that they're going to kind of give us the idea of, you know, the deliverable for us is making sure that we've got a document and the information that we can take into Phase Two. That is the deliverable that we've got outlined in this, in the scope of work. And then what we're going to do is, as far as the individual deliverables, that's where these competitive, you know, these proposals will come in, and they're going to outline that in their particular schedule, and how they're going to address making sure that all these components are completed into this particular one document deliverable. So it's not just doing the research, but it's giving us that document, that's a plan at the end of the day that we can submit. Does that answer your question?
And then take it out to an RFP in the next phase.
And then we can take that to RFP in the next phase. So not only is it for the application, but it's also the basis for the scope of work that we'll have for the future implementation RFP.
Any other questions or comments from the council? So we'll close the public comment part. Okay. So hearing no comments or questions from the council, I would entertain a motion for the town council to authorize the mayor to enter into a joint agency agreement with Maricopa Association of Governments for the Maricopa Association of Governments Electric Vehicle Charging Infrastructure Program, and for the mayor to enter into a contract with a qualified consultant, selected through a competitive bid process to prepare an electric vehicle siting plan for an amount not to exceed the program refund limit of a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so I will put forth a motion to have the mayor enter into a joint agency agreement with the Maricopa Association of Governments for the Maricopa Association of Governments Electric Vehicle Charging Infrastructure Program, and for the mayor to enter into a contract with a qualified consultant to be selected through a competitive bid process to prepare an electrical vehicle siting plan for an amount not to exceed the program refund limit of 100,000 dollars.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passed unanimously, thank you. This is a good thing, good job, Steve, thanks. Item number 10, authorization of capital improvement project funding to purchase solar-operated speed display signs. Mr. Nice?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So Madison is going to introduce a new generation of customers up to Carefree. They're going to get in their EVs and park at our EV chargers, but we want to make sure that they're driving the speed limit. So today, we're going to talk a little bit about solar-operated speed display signs. This was an item that was brought up probably a year or so ago, and part of our past budget discussions. And there have been a number of citizen concerns about traffic speeds along our major streets, those migrating through Carefree onto the lakes or to our neighboring town, obviously are not gentle with their gas pedal and tend to go over the speed limit. Enforcement is not the panacea, it's only as good as that officer out there and catching the bad actors. One of the things that we found is that education through display signs helps to inform the driver coming through Carefree, hey, you're going past the speed limit. And so it's informative, it's something that is a little bit gentler than the photo radar that some of the neighboring communities around us have. But it also harvests data that we can share with MCSO and allows them to then take their limited resources and target specific areas during specific durations of the day and the week, to more effectively patrol our streets. So two dimensions to these displays. We've talked about a number of locations around town, and it's based upon community feedback that we've received in the past. We're looking at essentially five locations, but two signs in either direction. On Cave Creek Road, west side of Black Mountain, there are actually two digital signs that we installed about eight years ago. They've done a wonderful job, but the signs today are a lot more savvy with the data, and the dimensions of the digital board are a lot larger, so you can see the speed displays a lot easier. So we're looking at repositioning those to some of our residential streets, but putting two, one north of Lowe's and one south of the Sentinel Rock subdivision, so catching traffic both north and southbound. On Stagecoach, we also have two of the older speed signs, and we're looking at repurposing those and installing these larger ones that will also allow us to collect data in real time and share that with MCSO. On Cave Creek Road by Desert Mountain, we get a lot of people going up to the lakes and enjoying the lakes, and we get a lot of folks from Desert Mountain coming through Carefree, approaching that intersection of Pima Cave Creek Road, and going a little bit too fast. So this, once again, will help to educate those drivers looking to recreate at the lakes and those drivers looking to exit real quickly through Desert Mountain. Sky Ranch, yes?
I do have a question for you, Gary. There's been concern that on Carefree Highway, and now I know that the entire highway doesn't belong to the town of Carefree, but the north side, is there a way that we could maybe put some signs out there for some of the extreme speeding that goes on?
So the entire right-of-way is in the city of Scottsdale. Scottsdale's working on plans, they're approaching 60% improvement plans, and will be doing a neighborhood meeting in the near term associated with those plans. That's one of the discussion points that folks that attend the meeting can have with Scottsdale. Certainly, Scottsdale has a similar program, and they can put those signs out there. They also have the lovely photo radar that they can put out there, too, to slow the traffic, probably even more effectively than these signs. But, yes, we can work with Scottsdale to locate, but Scottsdale owns all that right-of-way there.
Do you have any type of a timeframe or anything that they're acting on this to ensure that we get some control out there?
September. So 60% plans will be done in September, so then they'll share their noise analysis, their plans at that point, and they'll have a public meeting and post it on their website.
So that's this month.
And they say within 30 days. Having said that, they have had other dates for 60% plans which have come and gone, but they said that like 10 days ago.
It's a moving target, so the mayor recently had a discussion with them.
Is this something that maybe you, with your counterpart in Scottsdale, that we can-
Yes, we can certainly discuss that with them.
Thanks.
Yes, absolutely. The third location is, or actually, fourth location is by Sky Ranch Airport. There's a little bend in that road, unfortunately, we've had some fatalities there, not attributed directly to speed, there have been some aggravating factors with those accidents, but we do want to slow the traffic approaching that curve in the road, that bend in the road there. So we're looking at both east and westbound at that respective location. And then on Tom Darlington, further out south of the town center, it's actually a residential area, there was residential homes on both sides of the street, and we're looking to slow the traffic as it migrates through that area, so both north and southbound between Long Rifle and Meander Way. So those are the respective locations that we're looking at. The equipment acquisition takes about 10 to 12 weeks, I know that's surprising, but there are still supply chain issues, believe it or not, and that's affecting the delivery of these signs. So the vendor has told us about 10 to 12 weeks. Installation will be done by our town public works department, and they will probably schedule that after delivery of these signs, sometime in late winter to early spring, once again, contingent upon the delivery, the timely delivery of the equipment. If all goes as planned, hopefully, these will be in operation sometime this spring, which, as you know, is the peak travel period, when we get a lot of folks called snowboard birds coming through the community. So hopefully, we'll have them in place by then. Each of these speed signs costs approximately $4,800, with the additional $750 for the supporting assembly, so there's a special post that we need to purchase and an assembly to anchor these onto the respective posts. There is a little wind load, a little torque with this, with the solar on top of that post, so we have to ensure that we get a robust post to support this. There is access to share the collected data with law enforcement, there's a seven-year contract, the annual fee for each of those signs is $310, so it does add up. But once again, this is powerful information that we can share with MCSO and more efficiently and effectively enforce the speed signs or the speed limits within Carefree. So the total- So, the total cost with the subscription service and all the equipment for ten signs is ninety-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars, and that also includes the respective tax. Pricing for the equipment was provided through a co-op, which is publicly procured, and the town historically has participated in. And funding for these signs has been allocated under the capital improvement budget for traffic safety enhancement in our current fiscal year. So, that being said, Mayor, members of the council, the action before you is authorization of approximately ninety-three thousand dollars of the budgeted capital improvement traffic safety funds to purchase the solar-operated speed display signs to educate drivers and help more efficiently deploy the law enforcement personnel. That being said, be glad to address any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from council? So, I have a question. The data that's, I guess, obtained by these units, how is it downloaded? Do you have to go out there and hook up your laptop, or is it a Bluetooth thing, or is it internet?
It's all cloud-based, so we will not have to, our existing signs, you have to plug it in and sit by the right-of-way and download that information. This is all real-time that we can access through the cloud. So, it's really a nifty software program that allows us to access each and every sign out there.
And does it include an app on your laptop or on your computer that helps you analyze what you're getting?
Yes, so we will download a app on our respective computers and then access that software, our account.
It may be premature. Have you given any thought to where these, we'll call them secondary digital displays will go? Maybe too soon.
Yeah, yes, we are considering them. Bloody Basin has been one target. Mule Train by Savannah has been another target. Carefree Drive has been another target north of the town center. So, there's multiple locations where we can reposition this.
Stagecoach is pretty bad as well.
Well, Stagecoach, we will have these larger signs there.
Okay, great, thank you. So, this is called to the public?
Yes.
Not for this?
Yes, correct. Thanks.
Okay, we have no public comment on this item. Any other questions or comments from the council? So, I would entertain a motion to authorize ninety-three thousand dollars of budgeted capital improvement traffic safety funds to purchase solar-operated speed display signs to educate drivers and help more efficiently deploy law enforcement personnel.
I'll make that motion?
Second.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously, thank you. Very good. Item number 11, Review Discussion and Possible Action to Approve a Contract for a Landscape Refresh of the Carefree Fire Station. Mr. Neese.
Mayor, members of council, be really brief here. This is pretty straightforward. Like you described, this is just a refresh of the landscape that has matured over approximately the last twenty years. Desert Foothills Landscape actually supplemented the landscape about fifteen years ago at the firehouse and installed some of the specimen plants that you see in this photograph. They have proposed a upgrade to the irrigation system that leaks quite a bit and that we have to shut down and try and repair every now and then, refresh to the accent lighting, the night scape lighting on some of the specimen plants, and then balancing out the landscaping, removing some of the more mature yuccas that are too large for the respective areas, and just rebalancing the landscaping and putting in some new cacti and some additional color to really make that landscape pop, in addition to refreshing all the DG. The cost is approximately twenty thousand dollars. That's a significant discount over what it would actually cost us. Desert Foothills Landscape has been a wonderful partner with the town, and once again, they donated a lot of the specimens that you see at the fire station and throughout our gardens. So, they've been a wonderful partner with the town. So, the action before the council tonight is to essentially award a contract of twenty thousand dollars to refresh the landscape at the firehouse from the fire capital improvement program in our town's budget.
Okay, thank you. Comments or questions?
I have a comment. I walked the grounds this afternoon with the fire chief, B.J. Pullman, and it was very apparent that things needed to be improved, and there were a lot of plants that were overgrown. So, I later spoke with Mark Vargas, who is with Desert Foothills Landscape. He was involved in the original installation, and as well, he was involved in the gardens, our Carefree Gardens. Spending about fifteen minutes with him on the phone, I could tell he was very passionate, has a very artistic offering for this. So, we spoke of going in and pruning the ironwood tree and seeing what we have to work with, and he'll kind of play with adding more yuccas and moving things. So, that all sounded good, filling in some of the open holes with flowering plants. He also spoke of the irrigation system. They're going to a Hunter system that is connected through the Wi-Fi, so it can be monitored. We can observe if the system goes down, if it's off, whatever. So, that's very important in our heat that we have. So, I think that's very good. They're redoing the entire irrigation system. They're using Schedule 40 PVC and as well, Schedule 40 poly drip line, which is a new technology that's more flexible. So, the system, the irrigation is sort of at its end of life at this point. And I'll say that the Hunter system is sort of state-of-the-art. I'm using it, my son is using it. It's, I mean, it's, I think we need to think about it on the gardens in the future, so. So, I think it's going to turn out great. The fire station is a great building. I think that just with careful placement of these adjustments will be fantastic.
Based on what you see and what Desert Foothills is proposing that we pay them, how much of a significant discount is this?
Well, I mean, I'm involved in two-hundred-thousand-dollar residential installations, twenty-thousand dollars, I think, twenty thousand two sixty or something. This is a bargain. I mean, we're talking complete irrigation system, we're talking yuccas, we're talking saboros, we're talking more granite. It's a real value, for sure.
It's about a sixty percent reduction over what it would cost.
First, thanks for going out there. Thank you very much. That's good.
And by the way, B.J. is in the back of the room, and we walked the grounds, and this is something that I think will really, really set off the fire department.
Yeah, I think it's important that it looks good, this is a reflection of our town. I mean, it's the Carefree Fire Department, sorry, Fire Station. It's right on the main drag, so it shouldn't, and it hasn't been done in twenty years. It's overgrown, there's dead stuff there. I would just say it should be fire-wise. Okay. Any other comments or questions from the council? So, you have one public comment. Ms. Janice Beavis. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Yeah, good evening, council. I just wanted to ask a question, and it's more or less about landscaping and the lack of between the two bank buildings. Is there anything that can be done about that? It looks pretty terrible when you pull into the town. There's like nothing there.
Yeah, so, Eric, you could address that. I don't believe we own that, but...
No, I would have to understand the respective location. Is that along...
Bank of America, and then across the street, Chase, those two locations?
On Wombleway.
Yes.
Most of that area, those landscape areas are on the adjacent private property, so we would have to work through the banks to enhance that.
They can afford it, I'm sure.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so it would be great to speak with them about it, because it would improve the look of the town, I think.
Yeah, actually, good suggestion, especially since we're fixing up those crosswalks. If we can get the bank to spring for some simple plants that would live, it would be a good thing.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I spoke with the Chase Bank manager, and he's all up for it. He is trying to get clearance through the main, whatever he needs to do, so we'll have some action.
Great, well, thank you. That's good news. Very good. Okay, close this public comment on this item. So, any other questions or comments from the council? So, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve twenty thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars to refresh landscape lighting and irrigation at the Carefree Fire Station.
Motion to approve twenty thousand two sixty-one to improve the landscape at the fire station.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously, thank you. Next item, call to the public. Are those wishing to address the council, need not request permission in advance. The public may address the council on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the public body may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, direct staff to study the matter, reschedule the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, the council may not discuss or take legal action at this time. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Mr. Todd Hutchins.
Hi, Mayor, council. Thank you for taking a few minutes of our time. We've wanted to address something in regards to the road closure at the farmer's market on Fridays and have discussion. We've talked, you know, briefly over the years about it, and we wanted to make a public comment record. It definitely is affecting our business when that road is shut down for that time period from seven to, I think it's two-ish, right around two. And we recommend that either a study or a review of this matter off-subject or another meeting to discuss the impact of that road closure, and also the safety concern of that road closure in regards to any, you know, right-of-ways and fire hazards, things like that, as well as when there's more than two-hundred-and-fifty people, whether there should be a staff member with the sheriff's department there, or, you know, somebody, you know, watching the public or whatever. But we wanted to bring that up, because it has impacted our business, along with other businesses, due to the flow that goes through that area, and we just wanted to make it public record and request for a further discussion or a study in regards to that. We think that it is not just our business impact, but other businesses in the area.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Art Beavis.
Again, I want to say that landscaping here is amazing. Thank you.
I want to take us back to the August 12/24 Economic Development Meeting, that prompted my viewing of a YouTube meeting from November 2020, or eight months after our economic developers hiring at 31620, four and a half years ago. It revealed minimal changes to town's agenda consisting of concerns about center retail shrinkage due to parking issues, poor signage, sanders in underuse, Shell Station's barren rear convenience store potential, Los Patalas and Town Hall described as past their useful life, and developing the northeast spa and northwest corner, not a spa until November 2021. Where all emphasized, the northeast corner has laid vacant for twelve years since the last GP change to the spa, reportedly due to wash, construction impediments in AZ, a state of wash with solutions for washes. Why haven't ordinances been changed to motivate vacant, storage utilized, or deteriorated building improvements? Are today's plans to demolish and erect a new town hall in exchange for an imagined revenue-generating restaurant to convince residents this massive construction expense is worthwhile? Is this conception of a new, roomy town hall that employee raises the actual reason for the alleged revenue needs the town constantly reminds us about? In that November 2020 meeting, administrative needs compare the new town hall to one's home remodeling, which tonight, he said is happening frequently in town. I agree and ask why we aren't considering renovation of the town hall, housing the staff in the new chambers here temporarily instead of extravagant reconstruction. Residents usually do remodels before demolishing their homes, selling the land and rebuilding elsewhere. Meanwhile, the northwest corner spa has been pushed into the next GP following the ex-mayor's long-term alliance with the property owner to meet in 2017 the resort row Carefree Plan, now exemplified and branded by the dominant Hilton Hampton and the crowded eventual STRs in the Village View, conveying substandard ideas about town's construction intentions. This northwest spa under strain despite countless residents' strident disapproval in written in-town meeting statements. So, I ask why, after four and a half years, don't we see anything produced other than the same old, same old? While our sales tax revenues diminish, Senate buildings lay vacant, a new town hall is promoted, raises for town employees, and a risky resort venture, eliminating one of our few open man-masters. I would hope our fiscal hearts on council would be concerned about where our revenue is drawing.
Okay, thank you. That concludes call to the public. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'd like to move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you all for sticking around.